Good evening, and welcome to the June 15th meeting of the Mount Vernon Board of Education. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. McCormick, will you please call the roll?
Good evening. Trustee Red?
Present.
Trustee Turnquist?
Present.
Trustee Mitchell?
Present.
Trustee Patterson?
Present.
Trustee McOwen?
Present.
Trustee White? Trustee Saunders?
Present.
Trustee Miller?
Present.
Quorum is present.
Great. We're going to need to go into executive session just for a few minutes right now at the beginning of the meeting, so I need a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of...
For the purposes of discussing the employment history of a particular person or persons.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Okay, motion carries. We should be out in about 10 minutes. Okay, sorry to keep you waiting. Okay, sorry about that, folks. May I have a motion to return to public session?
Motion. Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain. Motion carries. We're back. All right, we're moving on with our agenda. Do we have any communications from the public, Mr. McCormick?
We do, ma'am. Good evening. The Mount Vernon Board of Education recognizes the critical importance of community discourse in the involvement of the education of Mount Vernon's children, and accordingly, members of the public are invited to speak at each regularly scheduled board meeting, subject to the terms of board policy. Speakers must register in advance no later than 4:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting by contacting the district clerk in person at 165 North Columbus Avenue, by phone at 914-665-5235, or via email at rmacormick@mtvernicstd.org. The board welcomes all respectful comment, whether praise or criticism, however, identifying and criticizing a specific student, parent, teacher, administrator, or other Mount Vernon education official or employees prohibited. Such complaints must be presented and addressed through the appropriate channels. Speakers will be allotted three minutes to speak, with up to one additional minute to be used for the speaker to summarize and conclude his or her remarks. If appropriate board trustees, and/or the superintendent, or staff member at the superintendent's designation may respond to the speaker's remarks. Our speaker this evening is Mark Stuckey.
Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
Good evening, staff, residents of the city of Mount Vernon. First thing I would like to say, this has been a long time for me being here in this auditorium. The last time I was here is when I did an honoree for Bishop Darren Morton... Moore, I'm sorry. And to be here today to see that we have a large number of staff members who are going to be honored this evening for their tenure, I would like to say, welcome to Mount Vernon educational system. You know, we have a place here that's a beautiful home, and I'd just like to say from the bottom of my heart, welcome officially from me to Mount Vernon educational system. My question is tonight, too. The first one is to the Madam President. What supersedes, policy or practice?
I think generally, policy.
When you do practice for more than... The district do practice more than 10 years. Do the practice now supersedes the policy?
No. Policies would have to be rewritten to be changed. So we'd have to decide that a practice becomes a policy.
Excuse me.
I'm not sure where you're going. If you could be more specific, maybe I could answer you, or ask one of the administrators to answer you.
Well, okay. I just wanted to know that, you know, publicly, I'll get to you on the side, and I'll bring it to you then, since you don't have the answer.
If I may, there are sometimes circumstances that arise where a practice, particularly when it repeats itself sufficiently enough, becomes a past practice that gets integrated into administrative procedures and/or policies.
Okay, thank you. The second one is, Mandela Building has been totally rehabbed, and I saw the inside of that building, and it's really beautiful. You should do a tour for the taxpayers to let them see what the change was all about inside there, because the building looks really beautiful. One problem I have with that building is approximately $22 million was done, was put into that building for rehab. Our children's about to go to school there for the summer, and there's not one air conditioning system in that building, nor is it central air. For large taxpayers, the large price that we spend as taxpayers to wind up having that facility rehabbed and not have central air in it for the children, it's ridiculous. When we had this heat wave, the children suffered. Now, the question is, what's being taking place for summer school for the children who are in that building?
As part of the superintendent's report this evening, we'll be addressing air conditioning in the buildings and the plans for summer school. But for the record, there are additional phases associated with school renovations and upgrades, and not everything can happen at one time. So the fact that there isn't air conditioning doesn't mean there won't be air conditioning. And we'll be talking more about that in greater detail once the board makes a decision about the status of the bond and how they wish to proceed. But the bond projects are not closed out, so that does not mean that there won't be air conditioning. I can't speak for the board, because it is a board decision. But one of the challenges that we have with our buildings is the age of our buildings, and often people think it is simple as throwing a window unit in and cooling the rooms, and it's not that simple. When buildings are 80 years old, the electrical systems, and that's part of my report this evening, the electrical systems will not support that. So there is an infrastructure cost associated with cooling buildings that, in some instances, are not fiscally practical, even though it may be desirable, and maybe even something that we may choose to work towards in the future. But in a district with buildings in excess of 80 years old, even when they've been completely rehabbed, the infrastructure does not always lend itself in that regard.
Not to go into a debate or anything like that, I'm not trying to put damper on the celebrations this evening, but Dr. Hamilton, when you're rehabbing a facility with a large price tag, and to have cranes come in after the fact, to wind up putting air conditioning units on it, somebody dropped the ball. Somebody totally dropped that ball. And it's... You are the CEO. The buck stops with you. And what's happening is, there's no reason. It's just like Thornton's Auditorium. When they put that crane up there, and they start pulling that machinery for the air conditioning units, I was out there, and I watched what was going on. And I was told on one of the units, it was a fill, but one of the units was damaged, a piece of a unit. But I was told it was a fill. I don't care if it was a fill or not a fill for the air conditioning unit. We should not have been paid charge for something that came in damaged, period. And with the air conditionings taking place with that particular building, we should have had air conditioning put in on that roof to hold the load.
Mr. Stuckey, Mr. Stuckey...
Yes, I'm gonna cut it short. I'm gonna cut it.
Well, you're over your times. Wrap it up, please.
I have the models and serial numbers for every air conditioner that was in the Mandela Building before they shut it down. The question winds up being this evening for everyone who's here, who's hearing me, where are those air conditioning units now? Because those air conditioners, which are portables, which were paid for out of the Mandela Fund, should be put into the building. Now, if somebody's saying that the electrical cannot hold the load, that's not true. That is not true. Because when you're doing a rehab, the first thing kind of...
Mr. Stuckey, Mr. Stuckey.
...is make sure the electrical is up the park.
Mr. Stuckey.
And the gas lines.
Mr. Stuckey, I'm not gonna debate this with you, but what I'm not gonna allow you to do is suggest that I'm making a mistruth, because that I will not allow you to do. So it is, first of all, I didn't say that there would not be air conditioning. I said things happen in phases. That's what I said. Secondly, I did say that the infrastructure, it is not as simple as placing windows in every classroom. It's not that simple. That's what I said.
Thank you, Mr. Stuckey. Thank you, Mr. Stuckey. Any more communications?
That concludes public comment.
That ends public comment. Okay. So now we have reports of the superintendent.
Yes. First of all, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Ma'Me Foresome for her service to the board. Ma'Me, you have been an exceptional... You have been an exceptional student leader. You have been a stellar example for your peers on both the superintendent's, Student Advisory Council, as well as the Student Board Representative. I am impressed with the maturity and the dignity that you have displayed, and I think you have raised the standard for future student leaders, and I could not thank you enough. It has been an honor and a pleasure to work with you and to see how you have blossomed into the young woman that you are today. I am also pleased to report that with your leadership, we've been able to select a new board student representative who will join us in our July reorg meeting, and that was unanimously selected by students today, and that's John Aiden Harvey. And a large salute to Ma'Me for setting the framework for that to happen today. So thank you. At this time, Madam President, I'd like to present to Ma'Me with you. It reads, "Presented to Ma'Me Foresome in recognition for your tireless dedication and service to the students of the Mount Vernon City School District as a student member of the Board of Trustees, dated June 15, 2021."
It's on?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So today, I just wanted to thank everyone on the board for respecting my opinion, for giving me the space to address the concerns of the students in the district, and more. With your help, we got a lot done for the students in such and a certain year, from keeping them updated on in-person versus virtual school, to allowing the senior trips and the senior dances, to changing stances on Wellness Wednesdays, and traditional graduation once COVID guidelines made them safe. It was such an honor to be the student representative, and I'm glad that I made a difference. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'd also like to take this opportunity to extend my deepest thanks and appreciation to the PTA for a stellar scholarship event last week. The leadership developed an exceptional alternative to the annual scholarship dance. For those of you who attended, thank you so much for supporting the PTA and for ultimately supporting our students, and salute to the PTA for taking the lead on this. So thank you. As part of my report this evening, I'd just like to take a moment. We have several candidates in our district, administrators and teachers, but most recently, Dwayne Christian completed his doctorate degree. Even though he's leaving us, I'd like to just publicly congratulate Dwayne Christian for attaining his doctorate degree. We wish you well on your future endeavors, and we salute and anticipate more and more of our district employees reaching this pivotal point in their career and attaining their doctorate degrees. I was going to elaborate on the air conditioning, but I think we've already gone through that topic. But I just want to say that we have debated considerably whether or not we want it to have a remote day on days that were particularly hot in our buildings. And I know that in some instances, that's not always a viable option for parents who have childcare issues. So we were really in an untenable situation in terms of whether or not to open schools on those days. We followed the weather. We knew it was gonna be hot. But we had to balance between trying to make it work for the day, or giving parents little notice at that point to be able to make arrangements for their children. So it effectively was a no-win situation, and the conversation tonight was further evidence of that. Later on this evening, trustees, you will hear a report on curriculum mapping that I'm sure trustee TJ will address during her committee report relative to the curriculum mapping tab. And I want to also acknowledge a few district retirees before we get into recognizing our tenure candidates. I'd like to take this opportunity to personally extend my thanks and appreciation to Sharon Bradley and Ricky Stanley. These two district administrators are retiring this year, and together, these dedicated professionals have more than 65 years of experience. I have thoroughly enjoyed working with these two individuals and have developed a friendship that will span beyond the borders of the Mount Vernon City School District. So I thank you for your service. There are some other folks. If you're here, please be acknowledged. But for the record, we have other district members who are retiring after 40 years of service, in addition to Sharon Bradley, Lucille Tonell, Toba Dugan, Barbara Milstein, and Lynn Middleton. Forty years of service. Thirty years or more of service retiring is Louis Hibner, William Tyrant, Mary Donnelly, Lisa Kuzel, Diana O'Sullivan, Christine Ida Ayaldalo. Did I say that right? I apologize. I'm bad with names. Donna Fina, Sharon Fan, Alexandra Petty, Jesse Henry, Patricia Polisi, Hazel Bush, and Marian Fiorentini. Fiorentini, yes. Congratulations to those folks who are retiring. Thank you so much for your service to our district and to our students, and we are sad to see you go and wish you the absolute best in the next chapter of your life. And with that said, I will actually ask... For, perhaps we should do the... Madam Board President, if I can ask you to just act out of order before we recognize our tenure folks, and ask that that tab be reviewed before we call people up and celebrate their tenure?
So...
If we can just go to that particular business at hand...
Human Resources.
Yes, ma'am.
Sure. So I'll go through the motions.
Yes.
May I have a motion to approve... I can skip 6.1, you think?
I don't have it open. Which one is 6.1?
6.1.
Yes.
Oh, 6.1. Yeah, ma'am. I may have a motion to approve Human Resources Resolution 6.1.
Motion. Second.
Any questions about this resolution? All in favor?
Aye.
Did I hear Wanda?
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve Human Resources Resolution 6.2?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions? There being none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve HR Resolution 6.3?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Did everybody say aye? Who meant to say aye? How many ayes do we have? Seven? Okay. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve Human Resources Resolution 6.4?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve Human Resources Resolution 6.5?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Yes.
With that being said, Madam President, I'd like to ask our Assistant Superintendent of HR, Ms. Marcy Tigs, if she would begin to present our tenure, our newly tenured employees this evening. Congratulations to each of you here this evening on your tenure. There could not be a better time to be joining this extraordinary group of educators, particularly during one of the most difficult years in the history of public education. You made it through, and tonight, you reap the benefits of your hard labor by being recognized by this administration and this board, who has the sole authority to grant you tenure. So congratulations.
Megan Aldridge. Lori Angie. Karen Battersby. Danielle Beechner. Rochelle Brown. Claudette Berger. Tracy Charles. Colleen Chaffey. Cynthia Conrad. Jasmine Chris. Juliana Julian DeLuca Hollup. Kristen Diaz. Victor Diggs. Emily Don Levy. Michael Estevez. Sonia Flannery. Samantha Portier Viani. Janet Genter. Janice Gonzalez. Chelsea Griffin. Andrew Gignard. Thrusha Henderson. Kenyatta Hopkins. Nicole Howie. Kristin John. She didn't come. Oh, Howie is here? Christine John. Sorry, here she comes. Kimberly Khan. She's coming. Melissa Kelly. Ariella Noe. Jenna Koningsman. Isareen Lo. Tobias Magg. Laura Moreno. Congrats. Joanne Maxwell. Ava Mazella. Janine McDonald. Megan Medina. Megan Medina. Merka Medina. Kevin Middleton. Mary O'Reilly. Brian Polly. Mendisa Parchma.
Look, I'm writing for the fan club.
Kristen Passarello. Nicholas Pacell. Donovan Powell. Carrie Price. Helen Rocanelli. Dana Rosamne. Terri Roberson. Warren Rosa. Sarah Sabatino. Carmela Sanzzy. Anna Seward. Jacqueline Shkreli. Adrian Stanley. Carmel Terrible. Andrea Thomas. Dr. Crystal Waterman. Rhea Williams. Daniel Wolf. Sean Zimlack. And that concludes the tenure recognition for this evening.
Again, congratulations to all of our tenured staff this evening. Thank you for all that you do. This is not a decision taken lightly, so you are to be saluted.
Okay. Now I would like a motion to go back into executive session.
Motion.
We are entering executive session to discuss pending litigation in the employment history of a particular person or persons.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. We should be back in about 45 minutes. Public session.
Motion. Second.
Second.
Okay. We're back. Thank you for your forbearance. And I would say a wed woes, how romantic. We are up to... Pre... Oh, committee reports. Oh, we're still on the superintendent's report.
Thank you for your indulgence. I want to take an opportunity to have cabinet members that are planning to address the air conditioning units, air conditioning in our buildings and the plan for summer school to just come to the podium, please, and share with the board and those members of the public who are still here and viewing our plan for summer school and how we will address the issues of air conditioning, the air conditioning issue in our buildings.
Thank you very much. Hello, everyone. This year, we have a larger-than-usual...
Dr. BC, please. Thank you.
A larger-than-usual enrollment in our summer school. So it was brought to our attention that the buildings needed to have some air conditioning for the programs. So we currently have 10 buildings that are not air-conditioned. So what we did is we, the maintenance crew, did a complete survey of each of the buildings to see which rooms in each building have air conditioning, what areas, and how we could possibly either put some air conditioning in those rooms that will house the program or relocate the program to another school that does have air conditioning. So Dr. BC will talk about the school that we're going to relocate. But currently, we are in the process of purchasing 40-room air conditioners, two-ton units. They are high voltage, 210 volt, 220 volts. So they're going to need an electrical upgrade. So what we will do is we've identified how many rooms. It's six is the magic number in each of the schools. So we will air condition those six rooms. We will do the electrical upgrade, and we will have that in place by the time the program begins in early July. And like I said, Dr. BC will talk about the one school that we had to relocate.
Thank you, Mike. The one school that is going to, that we're going to relocate is Trappheagan into Pennington. And the reason why we chose Pennington and not Monvernon High School is that we know that a lot of parents probably would give us pushback for the kids to go to the high school. So what we did, we put them into Pennington. We are going to have two principals. Ms. Quinones is going to still do Trappheagan, and Ms. Henderson is still going to do Pennington. So what happened is that I spoke with Ms. Quinones, and she, along with the parent liaison, has a team of teachers that are going to reach out to the parents of Trappheagan to let them know that's where the school is going to be. So every other schools that we have have all their rooms air-conditioned, and those who don't have air-conditioning will have portable air conditioners put in those rooms where the kids are going to have summer school. So everything is pretty much taken care of.
Great. Thank you for your quick response, team.
Additionally, under the superintendent's report, we'll actually just save that for bond presentations, actually, Madam President. So then, we do have two presentations under that section of the agenda. One will address the bond, and the second presentation will be in reference to the swimming pool.
I'm sorry, before we go to that point, you said six rooms in each building, right? How are we having... I thought it was, I thought we were having at least kindergarten through eight.
We are.
Are we putting rooms together?
So each one of the buildings, there's not a single building that doesn't have several rooms that already have these air conditioners in them. So whatever six was the magic number to get to with the new equipment, and they are going to supplement with the areas that are already air-conditioned, whether they have some areas in some of the buildings that have central air, and then a lot of the buildings already have window units. And so there would be no electrical upgrade needed for those because they're already in place, and they'll use those plus the new ones to reach their goal to make sure each kid is in a room that's air-conditioned.
Okay, so just to be clear, every child that is in summer school this year will be in a room that has air conditioning?
In a classroom that has air conditioning, yes. They will, but you know, there'll be quarters and bathrooms and those areas that are not.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
But to answer your question a little bit more is that K through six is the magic number in most of the K through eight schools. Seventh and eighth graders will be heading to Benjamin Turner for a different program that they have there also.
Okay.
Yeah. I just make a comment. Just thank you for the quick response, and thank you, parents and public, for keeping us, you know, on our toes about this. Obviously, we've had summer school in every building throughout the district for years, but usually it is a very much smaller group of children, and those kids have been in air conditioning before. But now we have way more kids this summer, which is great, which is what we all wanted. It's a more complete summer option for more parents, and now this is the upgrade that has to go along with that. So thank you. I had a question about the electrical upgrades. When you say, Mr. Palicchio, that they are... Are these temporary upgrades or permanent upgrades? How are you getting 220 into these classrooms?
So our electricians, our contracted electricians, went through each of the spaces. So we got the room numbers from each of the principals. We went to that space. We're going to outfit the room right at the window site with additional wires. We'll pull them from a nearby panel. That room will be set. That air conditioning will be in place, and it'll be there in perpetuity.
So just, okay, so just to recap. So each individual principal, and obviously the principals know their buildings best, they decided which rooms it made sense, which rooms were already air-conditioned, first of all, and then for the extra rooms to accommodate the new extra students. Which of those are going to be easiest to populate and use as classrooms this summer, given the class sizes that we expect?
For instance, in one of the schools, they had two classes up on the upper floor and two classes on the middle floor, and the panel was very close to the middle floor. So we asked the principal if we can use the other two adjacent rooms. He said, she said absolutely no problem. So now that electrical upgrade is a little bit easier.
Right. So this was a conversation between buildings and grounds and principals because each of our buildings is very unique, and they have different electrical capacities, different-sized windows. Some of them open, some of them don't. Some of them have lots of outlets. Some of them have like one outlet per room. Everyone's different.
Absolutely. These are all dedicated circuits specifically for air conditioning, so there won't be any balloon circuits. It's the only way to really do this correctly.
And can you just talk for a minute about why is Trappheagan being treated differently? What's the reason for that?
So Trappheagan, as some people may know, already is outfitted for central air conditioning. So two years ago, in Capitol, we had the cooling tower and the chiller to be replaced. It was pulled from Capitol. COVID hit. It's pulled again from this year, so it'll go on. It'll be redesigned by our new architects, KG&amp;D. It'll be engineered. It'll go out to bid, and then hopefully we'll be able to, at this time next year, have air conditioning in place at Trappheagan.
Thank you for reminding us. I remember, but now everybody can remember. And also a reminder for everybody, the reason for the Trappheagan system, and it's needed to be replaced for years, is it's a freon system, right?
Yeah, so there was multiple leaks in the chiller, and we were able to remedy or remediate some of those. But what happened was the freon itself was no longer able to be used. It was out, it was completely, it was taken off. It wasn't allowed to be used anymore, that particular freon. So the new freon, believe it or not, and this is going to sound outlandish, but it's about $30,000 to fill the system, and it leaked out four days later. So, you know, we can roll that dice as long as we want, but you know, when there's upwards of a dozen leaks, and some of them are within the infrastructure, it gets very costly to do that. So we did it once, and I recommended that we no longer do that.
I remember that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That concludes the superintendent's report.
All right. Let's move on to committee reports. Does anyone have a committee report they'd like to share tonight? Mommy? No? Okay, you're done. You're done. Trustee Mitchell.
Hello? Okay. So about three weeks ago, Trustee Redd and I met with Mr. Palicchio when we took a tour of, will be one of many tours of our South Side, one of our South Side schools, Rebecca Turner. So we noticed, we made quite a laundry list of things that we found were of definite concern as far as the shape of the building, the look of the building, functionality, things like that. We were able to, Mr. Palicchio was able to assure us of certain things, and we basically just had a overall look at everything that was going on. We took about a good two-hour tour of that building, and we definitely saw a great need for attention to a lot of different things, be it not just cosmetic, but some things that just... The bottom line is, our babies are coming to school, and they're sitting in a building that doesn't look like they want to be in it at all. And if that's the case, then our teachers and our administrators, who are extremely important, are also sitting in those same buildings, and they, it looks like, it just doesn't look nice at all. And more than, I'm going to be as generous as possible, say 75% of the building really was just not in a good shape aesthetically at all. And I mean, across the board, all kinds of different things. So we realized that this is not just an issue of Rebecca Turner. As you know, we were dealing with the food services topics right before pandemic hit. So we're not just focusing on food. Again, like I said before, recently, I said we know we're going to start those tours back up, but we're touring all the schools, and this is going to go as much as we can through the summer and all the months in between because the agenda is still... Our South Side schools should not be left behind. They should not be left to look like, oh, this is some other country, isn't it? No, it shouldn't look like that. It should look just like, we talked equity in our district. We talked equity in the education level between our buildings and our district. Then there should be equity in the environment that our students and our teachers and our administrators, our custodians are working and are sitting in for more hours in the day than they even get to spend at home with their own families. So just to make that clear, I'm going to let Trustee Redd definitely mention anything he wants to say on it as well.
No, I echo everything you said. I had kind of briefly spoke on it the week he wasn't here, two weeks ago. And basically, we're going to go to some other schools as well to check that out. I think, are we going to Graham this Friday?
Yeah, I believe we're going to Graham next.
We're going to Graham this Friday.
Then we will be hitting Cecil Parker directly. So while we may not be able to hit two buildings in the same day because I think we toured every single classroom.
Yeah.
Mike, we toured every single room in the building at Rebecca Turner. We took plenty of notes. It'll be the same thing. Not one building on South Side will receive any less attention. So it'll be Graham, I believe, next, which we discussed, and then it'll be Cecil Parker after that.
Right.
We'll be returning to Williams because I know that... We'll be returning to Williams because I know that trustee Turnquist Jones also visited Williams. And that's, that's the agenda and we're going to be aggressive.
I have a question and I'm sorry for my ignorance since, you know, I'm brand new here. But obviously, this problem is not a new problem. It has been a persistent problem for many, many years. So why has it come to this point?
Good question.
I'm not sure if that's a question for me.
No, I'm just, it's just for everybody here.
The way I'll answer it, it won't be correct.
Because honestly, I'm listening and I have been hearing some parents that, that take their kids to William and, and it's for me, it's perplexing because it's not something that all of a sudden the school just became, you know, a, a place in which it's not conducive for learning. It's not anything new, then now it's becoming a priority and I'm just right now trying to figure out why has it taken so many years for this to be a priority?
Mike, before you, before you say something, because I see you ready, I don't think that it's just now becoming a priority. I've seen it be a priority for a long time and there's been plenty of attention shine, shines, light shine shown on these topics, but it's traction and if, and actual fruition of all of that priority. Priority has never not been there, it's just in execution and how things are done. I mean, we can literally sit down and look at how much money has been spent over the past 10 years across the buildings in our district and you will see inequity, period. You will see inequity, period. It's not there. That's not showing that it's not a priority, it's showing that money is being used some places and not others.
Yeah.
Because if, if, if William has been in this condition for so many years, why did we spend so much money in building an annex at Pennington? When that money should have been used to improve Williams.
Okay, no comment?
We can, we can talk about that all night if you'd like. I mean, we have the history, all of us up here voted on it and we have spent over $2 million at Williams and we just, we just reviewed many of the dollars that we've spent in this district. We've spent, we just had a bond for $108 million. The building condition survey that preceded that bond listed over $200 million worth of repairs is needed.
I'm sorry, I did, I voted, I didn't, I don't remember voting on the annex at Pennington. I wasn't here.
Okay, so I guess that was five years, four years, three years ago?
Uh, yeah, I wasn't here three years ago.
Whatever, my point is that let's, I understand there's work to be done, there's a lot of work to be done, but I also think we should acknowledge the progress that we've made over the last six years or seven years, or if you've been on fewer than however many years you've been on. We all vote on every project, right? It's up to us what we spend money on.
But I agree.
So I stand by my votes, the time I've been on the board and I think we've made great progress and I'm proud of it and I look forward to continuing to make improvements at every school in the building. And I'm glad that people are doing tours. I've done tours too and we need to continue to be vigilant, but we also don't have unlimited resources. So every single day, decisions about priorities are made, every single day.
No, but Mike, I'm not, it's not a form of an attack and, but yes, priority.
But it shouldn't be an attack.
Did we have to build an annex?
Yes.
That costs millions of dollars when we have a school in chaos that obviously it didn't start yesterday, it didn't start five years ago, it didn't start happening 10 years ago. This school, for what I have seen and what I have heard, is, it's not a place that children should be learning at.
So trustee Sorenson, I have a suggestion. I don't think this is a good idea to litigate what's happened in the past. I understand the frustration, I get it, and I have heard about this for years as well. I agree that this is about the execution and about the follow-through, all right? So what I was going to ask trustee Mitchell is, what is the process? So you are coming back with your copious notes from every classroom. What happens to those notes? Where do they go?
After we have our tours with Mr. Palicchio, we combine, combine notes. He sends us a recap via email with trustee Redd on that email as well and any other trustee that wants to be TC'd can be. And we let him know if he missed anything, he lets us know if we missed anything. And the object is obviously that the next monies that are available to us are going to be in the savings that we've been talking about and we share with the public that all their savings, we're doing this with the money, we're doing great with this money. The idea is now we're going to do some things with this money that we've saved and all the, the monies that we have and we're going to reinvest them into our schools that are in the worst condition still.
So, so the question I have is, you give, you give the notes to Mr. Palicchio, you consolidate the notes, then do these, all these issues that you're reporting on get added to a list somewhere?
So, may I say something, Madam President?
Yeah.
I think what a logical approach to this would be is we're, we're in the midst of the 2021 BCS and like trustee McOwen said, in the 2015 BCS, between 144 and 200 million dollars in repairs was, was identified. So we take the notes that the trustees put together during these tours and my recap, I, I suggest, if it's okay with the superintendent, we pass that right along to the architects, KG and D. They add it to their notes of the BCS and they come up with a five-year plan. That five-year plan will include all of the buildings and then you folks will decide how we spend it or how we, how we remedy the five-year plan. I don't see another path.
So, so we need a priority list though, right? So any, anything that's been around since 2015, wouldn't that be something that we would address first?
So the 20, so the BCS is done every five years. So the 2015 is, is just a year that it was done, so the next one is here. So when we identify $200 million worth of repairs, I mean, unless I'm missing something, we don't have $200 million without doing some other sort of referendum to attack all the, all the repairs that are necessary, whether it be South Side, North Side or wherever. So I suggest that we, that once we give you all of that information on all 16 buildings, all 17 buildings, including the Ed Center, then you guys say to yourselves, okay, we're going to do this, this, this and this in this priority order and however we fund that is another big decision that you'll have to make. There, there's no, there's no hidden things here. It's not, it's, it's not magic, it's, it's data and how we're going to spend the money.
And if I, if I may, Madam President, I'd just like to respond to Mr. Sorenson. So when I came in the district, I asked the same question. How could these buildings have been ignored for so long and it is the issue of competing priorities? 15 years from now, somebody will look back and say, what was this board thinking? Why didn't they do X, Y and Z? There's never enough money for a district as well established as Mount Vernon to be able to renovate all the buildings and do all the things that need to be done because of the age. What happens in communities like Mount Vernon, and Mount Vernon is not an anomaly, is at some point, capital project money gets moved to programs, services, things that directly impact students and capital projects get delayed and delayed and delayed until you end up with this huge gap in terms of what needs to be done and what you can actually afford to do. So the, and trustee Miller has alluded to an opportunity to bring you all, bring you completely up to date on what that bond encompasses, but there are still, even with the extraordinary work that's already been done, there is still hundreds of millions of dollars worth of work that needs to be done in our district in order to renovate. And by the time we finish that, it'll be time to start over and redo some of the work that we've done and that we did in the 2016 bond. It's a never-ending cycle.
But this is within, but the important point here, and Mr. Palicchio made this point, is that this is within the board's control. So basically, when all this stuff gets consolidated, trustee Mitchell, I'm assuming that this will come as a recommendation, there'll be a priority, a recommendation will come with priorities to the board for the board's approval, right? So, so we will get, so that, that's what I, my expectation is that we will get a, a list of issues and priorities and then the board can discuss what the priorities are and make a decision on it.
They will do that when we finish the tours.
Yeah, I agree and we need to prioritize and everything else and I also agree that we have moved forward tremendously because I have also been talking to people that have been living here for years and I also agree that it's a cycle. And in three, four, five, 10 years, we're going to have to look and accommodate the need of our community. But the question has not yet been answered because yes, it was a priority and why wasn't executed? And we have plenty of people here because you're going to tell me right now that an annex was more important than make that school a learning, a place in which children want to go and want to learn? For me, this is a disgrace. And I may be offending some of you and honestly, I don't care. But it is a disgrace and what message are we sending our community? That the North Side is much more important than the South Side? And yes, it is a North-South Side situation because if you walk around where I live, which is in the North Side, the schools are great, but let's go to the South Side. Let's take a walk on the Wild Side. So please don't tell me that. And you are, like I said, I don't care if you get upset, but the reality is this is a disgrace that we have to prioritize and then execute the wrong priority. Why is that? And I know the question will not be answered. And with that, the table is all yours.
If I can weigh in really quickly, and again, I think it's, I think it's very easy, since we weren't there, you weren't there, I wasn't there. I think it's very easy to turn around and go, well, wait a second, what were we thinking, or what were we as a body? Because we weren't there, right? And I think part of it was the pre-K through eight model, if I'm not mistaken, that that's why the annex was needed at Pennington. And again, I think you're right. I think when we're sitting here looking at taking, you know, one thing over the other, I mean, some things always going to suffer, right? And it's something that we've been talking about, the Budget Committee, because we've been talking about the BCS and how that's coming up and how are we going to fund that? And I think everybody needs to really start thinking about and start talking to people about, as unpopular as it may be, we're going to have to go out and get another bond. There is no other way to get buildings, to bring buildings up to speed unless we take out another bond at some point soon. So we can, you know, again, I, I think it's hard and I, I looked at the BCS report when I first came on the board and it's like, you know, it's like a ream of paper. It's insane, but we have 100-year-old buildings and we have really, we have issues that other districts don't have. We've, we've, and, and so we have to be deliberate. And if the priority, and I've done tours with, you know, trustee Mitchell on the South Side, we've done tours, I'm joining you guys on Friday, I've done tours with Mr. Palicchio myself, we need to focus. So start talking to people and getting people comfortable with the fact that there will have to be at some point another bond because that's the only way we can get enough money to come in to bring those buildings up to speed.
I, I don't think it's, it's not a, it's not a premonition and it's going to be another bond, but just think about it. We had a bond and yet we spent millions on schools and I'm going to just say it, they just really didn't need the amount of money that was spent. It was just about who was on this board, who voted for how those funds were used and how those funds were ultimately, to some extent, misappropriated, period. That's it. That's what this is about. We know it's going to be another bond to get all of this stuff done, we know that. Yeah, we do. And the thing about it is, it's not, it's not just going to be about, it's not just going to be about talking to people and letting them know we're going to need another bond, it's going to be about talking to them and letting them know, okay, this time this bond is going to actually be handled by the folks who are worried about the side of the parts in the schools and the buildings that didn't get taken care of. That's what it's going to be. It's not, we already know it's going to be a talk about there's going to be another bond. It's just that our discussion has to be how it wasn't handled correctly in, in sake of the people on the South Side and how it has to be done right this time. That's what the conversation has to be, that's all.
I, I have, I have to talk here. I, I don't know why we're talking about this tonight or how this came up, but it is insulting and wrong to talk and accuse us as a board or this district about misappropriating funds. That's a dangerous accusation and I resent it and I don't think it's true or accurate. Now, we can go back and reevaluate all the priorities we've made, but at the time, I and many of us up here, we were at all these public presentations. We told the public exactly what we were going to do with the money at every single individual school. And then we amended it one time, we had another round of public presentations where we explained what we were doing to the public, the public approved it. So I don't know why we're getting into this whole thing about how somehow everybody's saying we misappropriated things and didn't do the right decisions. The public voted on it, okay? And we voted on it. And if you add up the dollars, we spent more dollars on the South Side than the North Side in total. It's not enough. It's not, it's true, you can add up the numbers. It's not enough, we need to do more, but I, I don't understand why everyone's, we're all of a sudden accusing each other and ourselves of doing something wrong with this 108 million dollar bond. We are, we did everything we promised the public, we did it on time and under budget. Was it enough? No, there is more to do. We've been telling the public for five years that it wasn't enough. There's no, we're not saying anything new tonight that we haven't said dozens of times before.
But you have to look at it from a perspective of people on the South Side.
Okay.
When they're going to Pennington and all these other schools and they're looking at it and seeing how great they look and then we go up into Rebecca Turner and it's the, the, the paint is chipped, the windows don't open, it's, you see mice traps everywhere. You know, that's not how it should be. So you got to start putting yourself in everybody else's shoes and understand that, yeah, it's cool on the North Side, but it's not cool on the South Side. And let's just deal with it, we don't have to be offended by this. This is nothing to be offended by, we're sitting here having a discussion.
I am more than happy to talk about the future we should go in as a board and where we should spend our future dollars and how we should prioritize the future. And that's what I thought we were talking about tonight and I am 100% in favor of that. I am not 100% in favor of us relitigating every decision we've made for the past five years. Let's talk about the future and how we get every school in the condition we think it should be in. I, I'm all for that discussion.
But nobody's trying to talk. Okay, 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 guys. The point is, the bottom line, that it needs to be discussed and I'm going to make it up my business that it will become a priority and it's going to be executed because this is ridiculous. Because I want to see the faces of those kids to have the same enthusiasm, the same smile than my son that goes to Pennington. I want to see the same enthusiasm, the same happiness, the same smile because I bet it's not the same. And I just want to make it right here, I'm going to make it my business and you may not like me, it's fine, none of you pay my mortgage.
I don't think, I don't think we need to be contentious, trustee Sorenson. I understand what you're saying, but you're on the board now, you are one of nine and I suggest that you get involved with the facilities committee and you help drive the bus on this.
Oh, believe you me.
Yeah, well, that's great and that's, that's why we're here. We're here to try to make the best decisions possible.
Yeah.
So I think that's, I think that's great. But I think we should move on, on this conversation right now.
Agree, let's move on.
So just to close, trustee Mitchell and I'll be at Graham School this Friday, correct? To go through the school and we're going to compile all the information that we have and then we're going to prioritize everything.
And any trustees that would like to join us, please, please, we'll have jackets.
I don't know if trustee Sorenson got the text about going to Graham School on Friday, did you?
Okay.
Sorry, I can't hear.
Okay.
Trustee Saunders, is your mic on? I can't hear anything.
All right, so is that it? Trustee Mitchell, would you like to say anything else or are we good?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Okay, trustee TJ.
Good night, everyone.
Yep.
So I have a couple of things to report about. I'm going to save my tour around Edward Williams School last. So I had the, the joy to sit down with the education team the other night and then the other morning and we talked about curriculum. So for those who are listening, when you hear the word curriculum, please, I want you to know that the, that a curriculum is a living is a living document, which means that it can be changed. A curriculum is a map and it is a guide. The curriculum that Mount Vernon City School District is looking at right now for our grades K through 12 is called Rubicon A D F Atlas. Which is a software. We're trying to get into the 21st century. Instead of writing curriculums for hours and hours by hand, now we are using a software that provides a digital warehouse for our curriculum, which again, is a living document, which means that a curriculum is to be changed according to time. This is an ongoing process. It will take about three to five calendar years to get the entire grades K through 12 in the software. That will be accessible online and on our website. The purpose of this process is to clearly, clearly communicate what students are expected to learn at each grade level. We know that in our community of Mount Vernon, that individuals have had questions in regards to our curriculum. And this will make it accessible to them online. The order of the course needs to be mapped, which reflects the need to align courses to the next generation learning standards. Next generation is our learning standards. And core instructional resources. Again, the curriculum mapping template is based on understanding by design. And enduring understanding. We're looking at essential questions, which is something that is kind of difficult for educators. Essential questions, essential questions is what help us with guiding our lesson plans. But now it's going to be embedded in our curriculum as well. Looking at diversity and equity, inclusion, and having questions reflected in the curriculum will be there. Which is in connection to the New York State Education Framework. And culturally responsive inquiry rubric. So you see that I'm reading because I had to take notes when I was in the meeting, so just bear with me because I really can't see without my glasses on or without them off. It's just a, you know. And it's after 9:30, but anyway. Every grade K through 12 will be mapped with the same template and stored, allowing our teachers and administrators to access the curriculum via unit planner. That means that teachers can also go in and adjust. And when they have team meetings, they'll be able to start adding on to the curriculum. Last but not least, the managing for results will be a process, including those that indicate what type of assessments have been administered and frequency for each. So we are truly excited about this new curriculum. This new curriculum software that is kind of intimidating when we were in the meeting because it's something that we're going into new, just like how we went into Zoom, which was also new. It's going to take about three to five years to, to, to upload K through 12. And I know that this is going to be something that we will all benefit from here in Mount Vernon City School District. Next. I wanted to start off by saying that Jared Collins and Tommy Guest were two students who were victimized and suffered from gun violence here in the city of Mount Vernon. Their parents went to Mount Vernon City School District. Yesterday, we had a youth forum. We had around 40 students from Mount Vernon City School District who were present. Maybe about four were girls, but it was very powerful to see all our boys there. Last, I just want to tell you that 2020 was the deadliest gun violence year in decades. And 2021, so far, is worse than 2020. Trustee Saunders and myself went and took a walk around Edward Williams. And so instead of me telling you the plethora of things that I know was not in place, I just want to talk about one thing tonight. And that is the library. So the library was just refurbished. I'm not sure who picked the color for the library. I don't like it. Need some vibrant colors there, like orange or yellow or something of that nature. But I want to remind you that a library is evidence that, um, that students are becoming literary, literary citizens. Edward Williams Library did not show that yet. But I am confident with the principal who was there and the assistant principal who we stood in that library for maybe 15 minutes and spoke, that there will be a change in that library in days to come. Because when some students go to the library, they don't necessarily go to the library because they want to read, but they go to the library because they want to get away from what is going on in the rest of the school. The furniture is not library furniture. So whoever is listening, in regards to the furniture at the library in Edward Williams School, that is not library furniture. And so we want to make sure that when we are looking at the budget, that we are looking at the budget in the right way. And that we are not taking library furniture from another school and bringing it to Edward Williams because that's what they used to do during the Civil Rights Movement. And that's why we fought against that. But that said, I will be going back to Edward Williams School. Because I live up the block from Edward Williams School. And I will continually work because it is for the children. And I know that those children who I met that day with trustee Saunders, they were happy. And they were smiling. Because maybe they never went to another school and saw something else. But I know that they are going to smile even more because we are going to make sure that we change the narrative at Edward Williams Elementary School. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Trustee McOwen?
Tonight, we have a first read of a, a new policy on equity inclusivity, inclusivity and diversity in education. This dovetails nicely with what trustee Turnquist Jones just talked about. This deals with education and curriculum and confirming and ensuring that these elements make it into our curriculum and programming. We also have been in discussions with NISBA and our attorneys to make this more progressive and require, for example, that vendors that the school district does business with have similar policies. But it's on tonight for a first reading. I encourage everyone, including the public, to read it and let us know if you have comments. And there's a few brackets. We're still confirming some legal language and making sure it ties in with similar laws in place for New York State government contracts. But otherwise, we'll hope for a second read and adoption at the next meeting.
Thank you. Trustee Munoz Patterson?
Um, yes. So the Budget Committee met and before the Budget Committee met, stakeholders, stakeholders from all of Mount Vernon met to review this federal money that we're getting. Because the federal money is for one purpose and one purpose only. And that is to make the children that have experienced this last year whole. And how much can we change their lives or how much can we help them in the next? The money's going to last about three to four years. So what we've done over the last few weeks is we've met with a number of stakeholders. BCS Office did an amazing job to go over and figure out where, what we can do with it. And remember, it's, it's all things that are one-off, things that we cannot use because obviously this federal money stops at some point, right? And then that whatever we do institute will have to be rolled into the budget in that fourth year. So it's stuff that we're focused on that are mostly one-offs, trying to get everybody back up to speed to stop whatever slide and slump that they're experiencing. So today for the Budget Committee, we met and we reviewed all of the money or all of the items that are in the budget. And I can't tell you how exciting it is to finally have some kind of positive from COVID. You know, there's not much left. But the fact of the matter is that our students will be so, I want to say, I guess nurtured, but they're going to be hopefully even better than they were before with all of these programs and everything that we're instituting. And the one thing that I wanted to say, and I kind of wanted to get everyone's antennae up in terms of, you know, one of the ideas that we were bouncing around. And I'll be honest, it was me. It wasn't really us. There is no us in this. Because of my own crazy. But I was trying to see if we could start to bring intramural sports back to the elementary schools and the middle school kids. Because I think it's important to see other schools. I think it's important to get around to other schools. And I think it's important to see other kids, other than the kids that are in your classes. And we have now all of these amazing fields and basketball courts and everything. So I think it makes sense that we should start bringing kids all over. And so we do have money in that, available for that as well. So if anyone's interested in coaching, because I can't bounce a ball and walk. I'm a really good cheerleader, though. I scream really well. But if anyone's interested, please reach out to me. Let me know. Let's talk about it. Let's figure out what we can do because I think it's really important.
Should make sure we do tennis, too. We just, we have all these brand-new tennis courts.
Tennis, there you go.
Yeah.
I don't even think of tennis. Again, that, that requires hand-eye coordination.
Thank you. Trustee Saunders?
Uh, yes. I, we had a health and wellness meeting on June 7th. Mr. Silver, Mr. Palicchio, Amy Machetti, and Abby Nash Hines with Patricia McElveen. We looked at the nutritional facts from the state guidelines. We went on the portals that Whitson uses, which is our food service person, on some of the school districts. I think Portchester may have been the most comparable or the most, one that mirrored Mount Vernon. But I believe they had two separate meals. We only have one. The intent was to go back to one of the schools yesterday to taste some of the lunch, but we didn't get a chance to do that. We decided to do it next week. But I do believe next week is, I don't know if it's going to be a full day or a lunch in the school next Monday. So maybe we should do it tomorrow. I don't know. When is, um, when is the last full day of school?
Uh, last, Dr. Gorman, last full day is Wednesday, isn't it?
Lunch is throughout. Yeah, lunch is all the way through.
So it's all the same lunch that even if they deliver the lunch, it's the same lunch?
Full of an opportunity to see exactly what is.
So even if we could go to homeschool to, um, next Wednes, next Monday and, and taste the lunch? Okay. All right. So the intent is to go to one of the schools and, and see the lunch program, taste some of the lunch and maybe see how we can revise the menus. Because the menus didn't seem palatable for some of our students. So more to come on that. That's all I have right now for the Wellness Committee. I don't have anything for special ed at this time.
Thank you. Trustee Red, do you have anything additional to add?
Yeah, I actually went over to the youth forum yesterday where Cynthia was at. And it was interesting just to hear everyone's take on what's going on in the city of Mount Vernon. And, um, you know, the way I looked at it is that Mount Vernon is dealing with a very serious problem economically. And, you know, unemployment and homelessness and, you know, poverty is really hitting us and that. And just to circle back to what we were saying to trustee McOwen, that's the frustration that we have. It's, um, difficult for us to go to these schools and see them. I mean, I went to these schools. I went to these schools years ago. And they were in great shape. And just to go back now and see where we're at physically and look at the structure of these schools, and I do understand they're old, but it's difficult to see. So you have to understand the frustration that we have on the South Side and looking at, you know, the North Side and seeing the difference. But that's it. That's it for me.
Okay, thank you very much. Trustee Saunders, you don't have a committee yet, but I know you're going to be jumping in. I know that, which is fantastic. More active, the better. I, I watched the forum as well on my computer and I was really impressed. I thought trustee Turnquist Jones did an amazing job. I thought the turnout was phenomenal. And I was also very proud of Brother Muhammad. He really impressed me and I learned how much I don't know. But I learned a lot from him. So I thought it was a really outstanding, outstanding event. And I, I understand you're going to be doing more of those, so I hope to make one in person at some point. All right. So now I think we're going on to presentations.
Yes, we have, we have two presentations this evening. I'm going to ask the board if they would move into the audience so that the projector can come down and you can view them. The first presentation will be on the bond referendum update. And the second presentation will be on the pool and the schedule. And we'll move in that order from one to the other.
Okay, good evening, everyone, again. I know we're a little late in the evening, but we have a bond presentation that will take us through the bond, the 2016 bond referendum. As it's been said many times tonight, I am proud to deliver to the superintendent and the Board of Trustees the 2016 bond referendum that came in ahead of schedule and under budget. We're going to have a bond update, which Mr. Bavio will walk us through. A debt service report, which Mr. Silver will walk us through. BCS and AVI, again, Ken Bavio. And the community engagement and procurement, again, Mr. Silver will walk us through that final piece. So with any, no other delay, I'll turn it over to Mr. Bavio as he walks us through this very informative presentation.
Thank you and good evening. I was told I have about less than half the time. I thought I did so I'll be as concise as possible. Nine, okay. So now I have a quarter. So we're, we're really excited to take a moment to, to share with you our accomplishments. What we've accomplished in four years is really remarkable with the bond work since 2016. So we're going to share some of that with you, where we started very briefly, briefly where we are and some of the next steps being that were taking place with the BCS and community outreach. All right. Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So we, we like to start off with this quote, but to, in the interest of time and to, to get to the point, the last sentence is really the focus. This has been a time of vigorous and positive action. And that's, that's just what we've done. So you're going to see, we've implemented the vision of the 2016, 2016 bond and the 2020 vision of the administration and the Board of Education. So where did we start? We had major space capacity needs. We had major infrastructure needs, as we know from the BCS in 2015, antiquated learning spaces. Code upgrades were necessary throughout the district. We had underutilized buildings in the example of Mandela, which had been closed for several years. And we had technology and security needs throughout the district. But what we really had was drive and vision. And just to flip through some examples of the conditions of the buildings with Columbus, Denzel Washington School of the Arts, roofs that needed to be replaced, antiquated classrooms, Graham that had no presence with a front entry or main entrance. Again, some of our elementary schools that were antiquated and in disrepair. Lincoln with the example of the operable partitions that were not functioning at the time imposed hazards. Mandela, as we know, had been abandoned. Athletic fields that couldn't host certain track and field events and had fields oriented in the incorrect orientation. Crumbling infrastructure. We had some insurance projects related to water damage that had to be resolved. Again, some of our elementary school locations in disrepair, and our auditoriums, several of our auditoriums needed to be updated. So where are we? We're happy to report that all the construction is complete. We're in the closeout documentation phase of, of the bond with the various projects. Most of the projects are closed out and the rest are underway. And we have three projects where we have some minor punchless items that are being completed as we speak. And in terms of our security projects, we're undergoing our training and commissioning as we speak for those systems. So here's a snapshot of all the projects and where we are, and you'll see under the construction status portion of the graph, everything is transitioned to the completed column with the three projects noted where there is some minor punchless items being addressed right now, but we do have beneficial use of those projects. And the final column to the right, FCR stands for Final Cost Reports, and that speaks to our final reporting to New York State Ed on the, on the costs. And you'll see we're about halfway through that process as well, and the rest are ongoing. So in terms of the costs, we had given a comprehensive presentation in this regard in an earlier presentation, but just to highlight, it's really, as painful as it may have been for some of us at the time, it's really a success story. And not to get into the details of the process, but we were able to implement processes that saved the district ultimately millions of dollars. And this, this summary chart right here kind of captures all of that. We had, of the 34 projects, 17 projects where we had no change orders or actually had credits issued on those projects from allowances that were unused. We had 13 projects with only a 2% to 8% contingency use for change orders, and only four projects that were above 8%. So what does that translate to? A success rate of 33 of 34 projects were complete within the 10% contingency usage. Overall, our bond is completed on time and under budget, and some of the remaining funds are going to be used for the Grimes Annex demolition, as well as addressing some claims with various contractors. So where we are, just a snapshot, I know it's late, but it's really important to take a moment and see what we've accomplished. So I'll flip through really quickly. Columbus Auditorium. Denzel Washington School of the Arts at the Nellie Thornton Campus, that's the new media center. Corridors were renovated. We had particular spaces that were renovated as well, the Scene Shop. This was the gut renovation of the main auditorium. Dance Studio. Experimental Theater. This was some imagery from our ribbon cutting from that event. Graham. This is the new main entry, which really gives a great presence, a welcoming presence to the street. The new entry plaza and secure vestibule. That also was part of our pre-K to 8 rollout. We also had a Phase 1 that incorporated, that addressed all the site work and provided new play space and athletic fields or a athletic field. Again, the new main entry. Here's our play area and green space. We created a secure man trap as part of the renovation work, which also tied into the security and technology project, renovated corridors, new science lab, new office space. Grimes. So because of our success in managing the other projects as part of the bond, as I stated, we'll be able to use some of the remaining funds to address the old Annex building, to remove that structure and create more green space at the Grimes School on the South Side. And we did complete, as part of the bond work, the electrical code upgrades in the main building. The five schools was part of the pre-K to 8 rollout, where we introduced the pre-K rooms and the science labs. It's Columbus, Lincoln, Williams, Holmes Science Lab, Hamilton Science, and of course, Mandela, bringing the abandoned building back to life. And as we know, this was a complete gut renovation, including a full roof replacement, exterior repairs, site work, in addition to providing additional classrooms that were needed to address our space issues. A new basketball court and front entry quad at the new canopy, the renovated gym, new classrooms, this is an art room, kindergarten room, corridors and stairwells, pre-K, the new green space outside the main entry, new kitchen and cafeteria. Mount Vernon Steam Academy, also part of our transition to the high schools of choice and the STEAM curriculum. It's complete. This was a two-phase project because we kept the building open during construction. We had an exterior project for the roof and the masonry, and then two phases for the interior as well, introducing the list of spaces as part of the STEAM curriculum. We also renovated the front entry, added wind turbines, masonry repairs, some of our lab spaces, again, some of our refurbished classrooms, new roofs. And also at, at the STEAM Academy, we renovated the old library to a media center. Mount Vernon High School Athletic Complex. This was again a two-phase project. The first phase introduced the new tennis courts, the track and the football field. The second phase introduced baseball, softball, soccer, track and field, and the multi-use quad green space, as well as our entryway and parking. Baseball, running track, softball, and again, track and field, tennis, football and track, and our mile-long running path. Pennington addition and renovations. Classroom additions, full site reconfiguration and fields, and classroom renovations. Seeing the library and corridor, science lab, pre-K. Trappigan Science, also part of the pre-K to 8 rollout, it's a new science lab. Williams Auditorium. This was a great space. We were able to salvage some of the original murals while upgrading the space and providing ADA accessibility to the stage. And IT and security has been rolled out in two phases thus far. The first phase is Graham, Pennington, and Thornton. Second phase was Mandela and the STEAM Academy. And here's an example of some of the technology that we're implementing as part of our security. We have video intercoms at the main entries with access control card readers. We have pantel zoom cameras that we can operate remotely. And we have, in the example of Mandela, we have a full lockdown capability where we can lock down the stairwell doors and main entry doors remotely or with the use of a lockdown button that's located in a couple of locations within the building that you see in the top right. And here's an example of the security stations at Mandela, which are being implemented throughout the district. So vision beyond 2016, Mr. Silver's going to speak for a moment regarding our debt service status.
How do I do that?
It's just the right arrow.
Okay. Thank you and good evening. Our bonds, our debt service consists of three parts. All right. So our debt service consists of three parts. The first part is what we owe in total from our debt service, and a part of that, I guess two parts, a part of that is what makes that up, and then the other part is what we pay each year and where we're going in the next five years, which is what we decided to show you tonight. So why isn't that going anywhere? There we are. So our debt service is made up of five parts. The first part is the 2,000 bond. Going back over 20 years, we're still paying off part of that bond. The second part is the Excel bond of a few years ago. Then we have had a small tax sursurary bond, none of which we've had in the past seven years. Then we have the new bond, and we have the energy performance contract. Right now, we pay about $21 million. All the way on the right, we pay about $21 million in principal and interest every year. That continues on until it goes down in 2026 and then further down in 2027. Right now, we owe $177 million. Our debt service, our debt limit, which is how much we are allowed to borrow altogether, is about $213 million. We're at $177 million. If you look at the next line down, the next yellow in the middle, next year, we will reduce that by $15 million. We'll be at $162 million. The following year, we'll be at 146, then 131, and in five years, we'll be down to $116 million, just a little over half of what our debt service, our debt limit permits. On the right in all of those was just how much we pay each year, somewhere around $21 million right now, including principal and interest.
So what else are we accomplishing beyond 2016? Or what else have we accomplished? We've done a lot with the bond, the 2016 bond, but at the same time, we've done an exceptional, exceptional amount of work in addition to what was identified in the bond. And this is just a snapshot of some of the additional projects we've completed since 2016. And you'll see there's been, been work at Williams, Columbus, Rebecca Turner, Lincoln, Trappigan, Parker, Graham, Grimes, Hamilton, Thornton, Mount Vernon High School, and several efforts district-wide, including our EPC work, drinking fountains, parking lot repairs, roof repairs, and lead water testing. So there, there's a lot that we've accomplished in such a short period of time. What else are we working on? As noted earlier in this evening's agenda, we're starting to talk about building condition surveys. And what is that and when is it happening? So as noted earlier, New York State requires that every five years, districts complete a building condition survey and five-year plan to help in our, our, our planning. And what that includes is a survey of the physical infrastructure and space conditions across the district at all our buildings. So we are going around with our team of consultants at each campus, going through each building, every space in the building, as well as reviewing the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems and roofs of the buildings to identify deficiencies and needs of the infrastructure. In terms of schedule, 2020 would have normally been our cycle year, but New York State in 2020 redistributed a lot of the districts in the state out over a multi-year period. So we got pushed to 2023. However, knowing the known infrastructure and capital improvement needs that remain outside of the bond work we completed, we felt there was a priority, and the administration and board felt there was a priority to begin that work now so that we could help plan and prioritize, as we've, as we've been discussing tonight, the additional needs that we need to meet and when we want to meet them. So part of the BCS is the physical surveying. There is then a document, a state document that's completed that includes priorities for the different types of work. And for example, anything that's a health, safety, and welfare item is automatic priority one or two, meaning it's the most high level in terms of the state's view. But we have the ability as a district and administration to help shape the narrative portion of the BCS, and we can help, we can translate our information that we're gathering from the field to our consultants to include in the BCS. So this is actually a really exciting time for us. So where are we in terms of schedule and status? As I noted, we've already went through an RFP process to gain, to get our consulting team in place. We've begun having initial meetings with the district administration to outline some of the priorities, and that information will continue to flow to us to get to the consultants. And we've begun the site surveys. So far, we've completed five building inspections, as well as all of the roof inspections with the roofing consultant. We have two more scheduled for tomorrow. We've been trying to limit our disruption of students and just keep it on a Wednesday schedule until we hit the summer, and then we're going to really kick it into high gear. And going forward, we expect all the site visits to be completed by mid-July and a draft of the five-year plan to be ready in late August for review by the board. So we're really going to push hard on this schedule. And the formal submission to SED will occur in 2023 as scheduled, but we will have our completed documents well ahead of time to help our planning. And to touch on community outreach, Mr. Silver's going to wrap up the presentation.
We've added community outreach to this because we felt it was important to think about what's going, what we're going to do going forward, to try to involve the community in some of what we're doing in our facilities. And the, the green part on the bottom is, we're going to try to skip a little of this and talk about what we've done and where we're going ourselves. But much of this deals with policies from the state and from the New York State School Boards Association. But we're trying to do improved communication and engagement among all stakeholders in an effort to enhance partnerships toward building a stronger school community. That's really what all of this says. What we've tried to do in the past, I'm going to tell you about in a minute, and what we're going to try to do going forward to do a better job than we have done. So these are some of the procurement principles. We strive for continuous improvement and transparency. We support an organization where leadership at all levels supports student learning, financial and operational priorities. Support an organization that provides our learners equitable and appropriate facilities, and an organization that celebrates and partners with the diverse culture of our community. All of this headed towards the community involvement going forward. So this slide just speaks about how we have to procure through the state rules, the state guidelines, the state policies. And we follow all the policies. The policy committee reviews the state policies, and we're in compliance with the New York State School Board recommended policies. But this is where we are really interested in talking to you tonight. So our procurement process is designed to ensure fair and open competition, guard against favoritism, improvidence, extravagance, fraud, and corruption. We want to ensure that the results meet, meet our needs and that we provide for checks and balances to regulate and oversee agency procurement activities that protect the interests of the state and our taxpayers. So our objective is to try to do more for our people here. We want to make reasonable efforts to ensure that vendors are aware of opportunities to compete for state business. We define the process by which the procurement is being conducted, disclose the process to potential vendors, adhere to the process while conducting procurement, and document the process. So what have we done? In conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce, we invited some 200 to 300 community members, vendors, to come and speak to us about how to get involved in our bond process. We did this, I believe, three times. We provided OSHA training at no cost to anybody who was interested in safety training. We helped people to try to learn how to get insurance and how to get bonded so that they could work for us. And that didn't really work very well. And going forward, we want to try to do a better job. And we are interested in getting ideas from the community, from the board, about how we can do a better job to get more community involvement in our projects going forward. Some of the bond projects are so big that it would be very difficult for community companies to be involved, but it's possible for individuals to be hired by companies, and we are going to make every attempt to make sure that companies that we hire are trying to hire our community members. So we are hoping to do better. We have a lot to do. There's going to be millions and millions of dollars in repairs, new work, capital projects going forward, perhaps, who knows what the next few years might bring. But the building condition survey will certainly show that there is a lot more to do. The original one was about $144 million. We don't know what the new one will be, but there's still a lot to do and a lot of opportunities for community involvement. Thank you. And that concludes our presentation.
Are there any questions? I know it's late in the hour. Thank you. Good job, gentlemen. And now we'll just transition to the pool presentation if there are any questions, if there are no questions on the bond. And that will be facilitated by Trish Ryan. Hi, Trish. Sorry you're out so late and you got to get up early in the morning. Good to see you.
Good to see you too. How does this work? What do I press? Sorry. Oh, there we go. All right. Good evening, everyone. Here to talk about the summer community swim. So the dates and hours and the pricing for community swim, we're actually hoping to get started and offer Monday, Wednesday evenings from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Wednesdays meaning starting tomorrow. And hopefully, and Saturdays from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. It would be $5 per visit, per individual, or community members can purchase a 10-pack for $35. And then a family of five, sorry for the typo, of up to five, it would be $10 per visit and/or a 10-pack for $105. There are some individuals and families that purchased passes in 2020, right before COVID, that I still have and will be valid through the end of the summer, so they could still use those. Along with any passes that are purchased will just expire by August 18th of 2021, which is when we're planning to run the program through. The setup of the pool, when it comes to the use of the pool, it'll be on a first-come, first-served basis. We'll have three lap lanes already set up. The rest of the pool will be open, swim, will be like an open swim space with a rope, obviously identifying the deep end so people know where the pool gets deeper. There'll be no more than two people in a swimming lane at a time. Swim caps are mandatory. And if, for whatever reason, we are experiencing busier than normal crowds, such as more than 25 people in the pool at the same time, a time limit will be enforced of 45 minutes per visit. We also have some protocols in place when it comes to just promote some social distancing in the locker rooms, showers, and pool decks, pretty much just signage, letting people know, you know, to space each other out and not crowd themselves in the locker rooms. One thing I'm very excited about is this pilot Learn to Swim program for August. We've been in touch with Bronx Swim, which is a swim outreach program. It's a nonprofit organization based out of the Bronx that offers Learn to Swim programs and safety education for kids. They primarily are based out of a facility in the Bronx, I believe Truman High School, if I'm not mistaken. And right now with the Board of Ed in the city, they're closed, so they're coming, they've been looking for another space to use as well. And they've reached out to us here at Mount Vernon High School to use our facility in regards to bringing their program and a Learn to Swim program here. So we'll have more about that in July, but we're hoping to roll out a pilot program in August for that month and hopefully continue on for the school year as well. Some safety protocols when it comes to the pool. We did submit a New York Forward Plan in order to get our permit through the Department of Health. So we do have a pre-screening form that will have to get filled out by individuals when they come to use the facility for each visit. We will have entering and exiting the facility will require staff and visitors to wear face masks when they can't obviously socially distance. When it comes to the pool deck, the office, first aid station, we'll have people required to wear masks and have appropriate PPE available to people if they need it. And masks will be required in the restrooms and locker rooms. And as per the Department of Health, masks are not allowed to be worn in the pool. Westchester Aquatic Club is another facility that's looking to rent our pool as well. They will have access to the pool four times a week for the summer. They are a competitive swim program, so this is a little different than Bronx Swim, which is a Learn to Swim program, which takes infants and toddlers and teaches them how to swim, whereas Westchester Aquatic Club is a competitive program that offers swim instruction primarily from the pool deck. And they also, they don't necessarily offer beginner lessons because they look for kids who, for their program, are already comfortable in the water. So that's why we were trying to work with both programs to provide for our community and their needs as well. And that is it.
I have a question.
Dr. Gorman?
Yeah.
Do you have any questions, please?
Sure. Micah? I just wanted to know, are you going to, I'm sorry, are you going to have any personnel class? Did you find the microphones? Can we turn up the house lights here, please?
I just want to know, will they have swimming classes for adults? And do, will they have an aerobic class or something like that? Those are questions that I was asked.
So when it comes to the enrollment, we don't have much information to provide. I do know with Bronx Swim, they, that's the premise. It's just a matter of starting slow and trying to grow a program that would feed our community and their needs. But that is on the list of things that will be offered, yes. Yeah, more information will be coming out probably by the, by the, over the summer, in July.
So the soonest we'll have an update on possible swim lessons is the July 6th meeting? Is that what's happening? I'm asking. The soonest we will have an update on potential swimming lessons will be the July 6th meeting? Is that?
Yes, we'll have a, yes. So we met with Bronx Swim and it's a, it's a, it's a big program. It could be, it has the potential for a big program, but we wanted to start small with a pilot program so we can assess the effectiveness of it and how many kids that were, we didn't want to overwhelm the facilities in August, but we will give an update for those swim lessons at the July 6th meeting. Yes, because the next step is for us to meet with them and design a plan for the implementation and phasing of lessons.
Okay. And on the agenda tonight, I think we have lifeguard hirings, yes?
Yes.
And is that for just our free swim or is that inclusive of these other potential programs? Would they also lifeguard for those programs?
Yes, so, can I speak? So for the Bronx Swim, the way we're trying to pilot this program is to work, make it so that this program can come in when we have the pool open to our community at the same time. So this way, our lifeguards can work for their program just at the same time as they're working for us, for the community program. And then potentially, the long-term goal that has been briefly spoken about with Bronx Swim is that our students that would be taking a swim instructor course can then filter into becoming swim instructors and working back and giving back to the community and teaching lessons as well.
Thanks.
All right, you could go home now. She's got glasses.
Wait, there's a question.
I have a question for Obama.
Yes.
Because my son, the twins, or Westchester, they are not only competitive for it, they're also teach, and after Coach Harley, her, her plans are to teach our children how to swim. And I have very, I have very close communication with her. So I'm pretty sure she has that information. If she's not, I will ask.
I can speak.
Hello again. So I've had several conversations with Carly Anne Fiara, Fiaro. She has, definitely has a swim program, both competitive and learning. However, she teaches from the deck and she's told me that the kids, no matter what age or what skill level, they have to be familiar in the water. So they have to have their face in the water in order to be familiar with the water and comfortable in the water for her, for this particular program that she's looking to do here. She will offer swim lessons. They're not free. They're at a reduced rate if you're a Mount Vernon resident. We have the, all the documentation. We're working through the facility to actually procure it for her. We believe that we will have a spot for her program as well and also for Bronx Swim. The great thing, one great thing about Bronx Swim is it's a minority-owned company. It's a Mount Vernon resident. He's a graduate of Mount Vernon High School and he is just a great guy and a gregarious man and he has a successful program, young guy. Carly Anne, same. Very enthusiastic, wants to help our, our community, wants to do a developed swim program. We'll have room for her as well. And then we will reevaluate again in the fall, once our academic program on the swim side and our teams, and then we'll reevaluate the times that we'll have for both of those programs. But we're looking to accommodate both of them on the facility side. Anything else?
All right, I can lose our presentations. Thank you, Trish. Sorry.
So we're going to return to the agenda and we will be starting under Human Resources. I will need a motion for Resolution 6.7.
Motion.
This is actually the subject matter that... I did... A trustee, Tress Jones, was talking about. We, we all, a few of us saw the presentation. It was fantastic, so. Any questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve Human Resources Resolution 6.8?
Motion.
Second.
Any further questions about this? We discussed this earlier. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve Human Resources Resolution 6.9?
Second.
Any further questions on this matter? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve Human Resources Resolution 6.10?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve Business Office Resolution 7.1?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
For point number four, rejecting bids for the home-to-school transportation, is this related to 7.5 and 7.6 also related to transportation or are these... I know these are separate agenda items, but can you clarify what each of these recisions are for? I was going to ask the same thing about 7.5 and 7.6 anyway.
Mr. Silver?
Here, you can come get my laptop.
So the, the one we're currently on, 7.1, item four, says authorization to reject all bids for the home-to-school transportation in district large bus contract bid.
Right, so that's the, that's the rejection.
Use the microphone, please.
Okay. So the rejection of the, of the bid for the large buses and for athletic trips and field trips all coincide. The same company, the one company that we're rejecting from, for the field trips and for the athletics, they refused to sign the contract. We, they won the bid, they were awarded by you last time, they refused to sign, they wanted the additional large bus contract. We don't have that. We don't, we don't have a necessity for the large buses. So knowing that, they have removed themselves from this. So we're rejecting it and we're going to go out to bid again.
So... Thank you. So what's the plan? What's the backup plan? What, are we going to have transportation?
We'll be, yeah, absolutely.
We're going to rebid it?
We'll be, we'll rebid it this month. We'll be back on, out on the street by the, and middle of July and we should have a contract in place by early August.
Can we just take the next highest bidder? Do we have to rebid the whole thing from the start again?
It's only the two that we're going to do, field trips and athletics. We have no large bus necessity, so we're just going to do those two. It, it should be, we had a couple of people bid on them. We think they'll rebid. Obviously, this person won't rebid or he'll be disqualified anyway and then we'll move forward from there. We will be in perfect shape, thumbs up there.
Thank you.
Any further questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain? Okay. May I have a motion to approve Business Office Resolution 7.2?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions about the tax warrant for the upcoming fiscal year? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Are we voting down there? Did I, did we get an aye? Or an, okay. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve Business Office Resolution 7.3?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions about the SECR? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve Business Office Resolution 7.4?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions about this?
Yeah, has this money been, I don't know, not for lack of a term allocated yet? Has it been planned yet? I'm assuming we have a...
I can't hear you, trustee. I'm sorry.
Is there a, I'm sorry. I wasn't talking into my microphone. I was talking to you. Has there, is there a plan for this $275,000?
On the, the, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
This is just a resolution that is required by our attorneys and by the state for us to get the $275,000 that we have already laid out for the renovation of these bathrooms.
So it's a reimbursement?
It's a reimbursement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Okay, motion carries. May I have a motion to approve Business Office Resolution 7.5?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions about this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve Business Office Resolution 7.6?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve School Improvement Resolution 8.1?
Motion.
Any questions about this, these? I'm sorry? Oh, do we have a second? I thought we did.
Second. I had a question. I just, I just wanted to, I'm just wondering what the, the current status is of hiring. I know we'll have more details later, but for the summer programs.
I'm, I'm sorry, trustee. I can't hear you.
Are we going to have enough teachers to run these programs in the summer?
We, we do so far, but we do have a waiting list and we will continue to recruit additional teachers. Many teachers don't want to work this summer, honestly. So we are looking for additional teachers and will continue to search, including going outside of our district in order to staff the program.
Thank you.
I guess a lot of districts are having challenges.
Yes.
It's been a long year. Okay, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve School Improvement Resolution 8.2?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions about summer school program? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve Student Services Resolution 9.1?
Second.
Any questions about Student Services Memorandum? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? May I have a motion to approve Buildings and Grounds Resolution 10.1?
Motion.
Any questions about Educational Data Services? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve Superintendent Resolution 11.1?
Did you say, sorry, 10.1 or 11.1?
What?
11.1.
Oh, I'm sorry.
11.1?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from... Our last meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions about the minutes?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? And trustee Mitchell abstain? Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the first reading or approve, just approve? Yeah, okay. Okay, so we don't need a motion. Okay. Would you like to read it? Or no? Or we'll all should read it on our own?
No, it's deemed read into the record, it'll also be posted on the website under the new policies link, and feel free to send me directly any comments if you'd like.
And when do we, when do we anticipate this will be done? I know you said you're...
By the next board meeting, we'll have a second read on the next board meeting.
I'm sorry?
The next board meeting.
Super, okay, great.
Along with, just to be clear, along with an updated on the procurement policy, which will go with this.
Excellent, thank you very much. Okay, so now we're going to have a roundtable, only kidding. I made you look.
Um, I act, wait, I'm sorry, I actually do have something. I'm sorry, I can't, I can't wait, I apologize. I know, that's why I asked you if we had a roundtable.
It's quite a break.
I'm sorry, I apologize to everybody. But the one thing that I know has been a topic of conversation is the city has been focused on, you know, programs and trying to bring more programs in and trying to ensure that we, we create safe environments for our kids, and one of the things that they've been talking about is that they need space. And as we've said numerous occasions, and as I've said, the one thing, we are like the church, right? We have all the space. So if we could start, and if it's okay with the board leadership, I'd like to start the conversation with Mr. Palicchio and myself and the city to talk about what their needs are, and that way we can come to the next meeting with an idea and a plan of, you know, what schools are open later, which ones wouldn't, again, would, which schools we could move programs into that wouldn't, we wouldn't incur any cost because the buildings are already open later and that kind of thing, so if that's okay. See, it's not a conversation, it's really a question. Is that okay with you guys? Am I good?
Sounds great. Let's keep the dial going and open and work together. Okay. Yes.
Closed at dawn. The playgrounds for some of the kids that want to go play basketball in some of the schools, some of them, some of them are closing at dawn, but there are some schools that stay locked up, and Williams is not open, and there are some other schools that aren't open to the public, and I'm getting questions as to why those schools aren't open and some of the other schools are.
Sure. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good morning.
So the general rule for all of our campuses, most of them are open where there's, there's no fencing, but the ones that have some fencing around them, we open them as early as 7:00 a.m. I know that's a little, a little after dawn, but that's, it would create an overtime situation if we got there earlier than that. Some community members have asked for that, and we were unable to accommodate that. However, on the closed side, we, we close them when our custodians leave for the day. We're going to have to talk about what we're going to do over the summer because the summer hours are seven to four, so we're going to have to, and I broached this subject with the superintendent, and he liked it, and so I'm investigating it more, have like a, if you will, a grounds marshal or somebody who would just drive around, one of our security guards or an employee that would make sure that people that are on our property have permits, they're there, and we open them at the same time, we close them at the same time, because we do run into an overtime situation if the custodians are gone for the day and they have to come back and close a park, and we do want to keep them, some of them closed, like Williams, because that is a pedestrian area, there's no parking in there, so when that, we, we have, there's a back over there where people can do some bad things, so we do keep that area locked once the custodians are gone for the day. But we are investigating a way to just have one person or a couple of people do it seven days a week and go around, check permits, and make sure that the parks are open at the times that we say.
That's for all schools, right? For all 17 buildings?
All, all 16 schools.
16, I apologize.
But you take a place like homeschool, it's wide open, it's open 24 hours a day, there's no way to lock it, in Trapphegan, for pedestrians. We do close it for the traffic so we don't get the apartments parking in there, and we can't get them out at 7:00 in the morning, but most of the campuses are open. Mandela is closed, so when the custodians close, we lock that gate when they leave. So, and in the summertime, they do leave at 4:00 p.m., so we will have to discuss that on how we'll keep them over, open a little later.
So is anyone at Graham facility and Pennington facilities, or they just stay there until, people just stay there until they decide to go home?
So at Pennington, right now, right now, the custodians are there till 9:00 p.m. until school ends, so, except on Wednesdays, they're there till 6:00. So when they leave at 9:00, any gate that needs to be locked is...
Ooh, sugar monkey.
Let's try this one, okay.
Okay.
So they, they leave at 9:00 now, and the high schools leave at 10:00, 11:00, or midnight, so there's plenty of time during the school year, we just have to talk about how we're going to manage it in the summertime.
Yeah, okay, all right, so we'll follow up on that at the next board meeting?
Absolutely, I'll get a plan to the superintendent, and with his blessing, we'll move right forward with it.
Can I just make a comment in regards to the topic at hand in, in regards to the parks? So I spoke to the police, remember, I was in that class, and we talked about the possibility of fixing a no trespassing sign. I think I talked to you, right, Palicchio? And when we had the, when I had the conversation with the police officers, they said, see, that gets a little sticky, because if we put the no trespassing sign, then when they do trespass, then it's now criminal.
So we are, and we've just designed the sign, and ran it through the superintendent, and he made some adjustments on it that will go to all 16 schools. It's basically telling everybody what, what they can and can't do in the parks, no open flames, no barbecuing, no, whatever, whatever the no's are, and then we are, the parks are open in the morning and they're closed in, at dusk, and it gives those times. It doesn't mention trespassing, so it just has the rules of the park and the do's and the don'ts and the times. So we took the trespass word out of it.
You're the bomb.
Okay, and I think, I think the most...
Well, I'm sorry, I just wanted to say something, and sorry about that. We need to figure out a way then to communicate with the community, because I know very well, for example, people around Pennington are, especially the people that live right in front of, in Devonia, they're really concerned about what's going on there, as well as Trapphegan, you know, so it's like, is there, I don't know if we do, if we have a, a committee, like a commi, community committee or something, that we could just go and speak to these people, because, you know, if you go through the next door, like, there's a, this constant, you know, postings about these things, and, and they are worried.
Right. So at Pennington, for instance, last week, I was out around 7:00 o'clock, I went into the parking lot, I saw a group of young men playing basketball, they immediately stopped, looked at me, came over to my car, said, are we cool? I said, the park will be closing in about an hour. I said, no hanging on the rims, you know, it's your park, you don't want to, you don't want to do anything that's going to take it away from you guys, it's for everybody to use. They were very respectful, they said, we'll leave as soon as the custodian tells us we can leave. It just so happened, that was right at the time that the custodian said, I'm locking up, they got their stuff and they left. So I, I agree with you 100%, I think if we have some engagement with some of the troubled areas that we were seeing, Graham, Pennington, or wherever they're congregating at Trapphegan, we could have some outreach, maybe we could do it through parent liaisons or something like that, and, and really reach out to the, to the community and try to have a partnership, because they are, it is for everybody, you know, it's hard to lock certain people out, so, that's just my opinion.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or concerns this evening? All are welcome. Stop laughing. Who's laughing? All right, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain?